Go for it, Peg.
Councilwoman Yor. Councilman Armley.
President.
Councilman McCormick.
Present.
Council, Councilman Musa, Musa, Musert, Musert. Council Vice President DiAgostino.
Present.
And Council President Collins.
Present. Item B, Plan Commission, Plan Commission Chair, and Plan Commission Curlic.
Yeah, I'd like to call to order on behalf of the Citroplan Commission for the joint special meeting with the Citro Town Council for Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We don't, we don't really do local, yeah.
Okay. Item three, public hearing, review, discussion, and/or potential action, and/or vote. No, no virtual participation on these public hearing items. Item A, consideration of proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan concerning lot fifty-five on tax assesses plot twenty-eight, located at eleven sixty Chopmist Hill Road, from a split of RR one-twenty and RS one-twenty to a split of RR one-twenty and BG Business General, with a smaller RR one-twenty zone than currently exists. This proposed change is part of an application to amend the existing zoning designation of lot fifty-five on tax assesses plot twenty-eight, on the official zoning map, from a split of RR one-twenty and RS one-twenty to a split of RR one-twenty and BG Business General, with a smaller RR one-twenty zone than currently exists. Both the Plan Commission and the Town Council must separately vote on this matter. Like that. Okay, is the applicant and the attorney here? Want to process the seat? Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I, I had some questions that I would address probably to the, to the Planning Commission if, if that's appropriate now.
We'll put that next.
Okay, that's, that's fine, hold off on that.
Okay, thank you. Or is there any staff comments or Ashley, right? You want to give a presentation for it?
Check, check. Check, check one.
I don't know, it's just working.
Check, check. Check, check one, two. Check, 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 check.
Try that again. The Plan Commission discussed this request at their last meeting, and we provided you with an advisory recommendation that summarizes that request and speaks to the Plan Commission's finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan. When this was originally applied for, it was applied for to be a change to, I believe it was BL, and there was discussion with the applicant at that time about the fact that that would be considered to be inconsistent. And there was some back and forth and understanding what the applicant was ultimately looking for. I think the, the compromise situation was to have a BG or change the request to a BG designation, which would be considered consistent considering what is adjacent to the area. There's a, an area of BG zoning that is directly adjacent to this parcel. And so that was the, ultimately, the finding of the Plan Commission was that that application was found to be consistent, and that is all outlined in that memo, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about what's contained in there.
So it's my understanding that this will be managed through special use permit. Is that right in terms of the liquor license?
I believe that is a requirement, that it would be a special use permit for that.
So if they want to have a, a wedding, you know, in a given month, and then all of a sudden someone asks to have a party again three weeks later, how do they handle that? Given that the Plan Commission meets, you know, month to month, or who gets it, who would, who would approve a special use permit?
So this, my understanding, and David can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, my understanding is the special use permit is a, it's a one-time application for that license in that there may be a requirement for an event license. If they're looking for specific individual events, they would have to come to the council for those event licenses, but the special use permit is a one-time application for the license. They would not go to the planning board for a special use permit every single time they had an event.
But they have to come back to the town in some fashion or form for each event?
So, again, the liquor, the ability to apply for a liquor license would be a special use permit governed either by the zoning board or the planning board if there's a unified development aspect, there might be a commercial site plan review, a development plan review. But that board would determine whether the site was appropriate for whatever the application is. And, and again, that's not before you this evening. The ability to apply for a special use permit, it's the tavern, you know, use code in the, the use table. That happens at the, again, zoning context, it's either zoning or planning depending on the application. If they wanted a liquor license, that would also have to come before the Town Council to apply for that license, A, if a license is available, and B, depending on the time of year, you know, if it's a new license and so on and so forth, and what the, the parameters of that license are. That contrasts with whether an entertainment license under your public entertainment ordinance is, is needed. That's for different activities beyond liquor. That is also separate from the concept of what's known as a class F license for liquor, which is a one day, and that's a, every time you want one of those, you would need to come before the Town Council and seek. That sort of a license. You would still need the special use permit even for that, most likely, but that's more of a theoretical issue before your zoning official, depending on what that application looks like. The, the meeting you're in right now with the joint, joint with planning is to determine whether the comprehensive plan should be amended to have the future land use map reflect what the applicant is looking for in the next meeting, which is a zone change split as shown on that map.
Okay, so I understand that, but it is the applicant suggested this is the first step in a, in a likely process.
Yes, many.
And, and so I'm just, I'm just, and I know tonight is not where we're going to debate whether or not what goes on at that property, but I just wanted to make certain that there are future bites at the apple to kind of contain what happens on the property.
Correct.
And that sounds like there are.
Yes, it's so, for instance, at the special use permit hearings, that board that's deciding whether or not to grant the special use permit is allowed to attach conditions to that particular grant of a special use permit. Likewise, at a liquor license hearing, the Town Council sitting at the, as the beverage licensing board is allowed to put further conditions on. And that includes a, a map seating area, serving area, and so on.
Hours of operation, days of operation.
Correct.
Okay, one of the other questions I had is Vern receipt of a letter from the Pro Providence Water Supply Board dated November eleventh that expressed some concerns about this move. Does that in any, if, any way affect the recommendation from the Plan Commission? Do you want to address that?
I don't know what the concerns are, so I can't speak to that because I haven't seen the letter.
I, I read the letter.
Yeah.
The Providence Water Supply Board didn't seem to have a problem when they wanted to put a twenty-five unit condominium complex on, right off of Pine Hill Road that's almost right next to the reservoir. They didn't seem to have any kind of problem with that. They referenced some river.
Rush Brook.
Rush Brook that they were showing me at the, at the building inspector's office today, which is really, really far away from this property. It, it, it doesn't appear to run through this property at all.
But what they suggested is that if you give, if you change the zoning to BG zoning, that it, this, that is in cement and goes on past, if these folks sell their property down the road, other things could go in there without restriction. And they just suggested things as ridiculous as gas stations and the like. I mean, it just, I'm just citing that they had concerns over it, and they were talking about trying to limit the scope of the, the extension of the, of the BG zoning to the existing lines or something like that. They were just expressing a concern that the change in the zoning will go beyond the life of this business in all likelihood. And, and they're concerned about the negative impact on Rush Brook. I'm just throwing it out there, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, it is true that if you change the zoning, that that, that goes with the land, and so this applicant could potentially sell that property, and then whatever is permitted in the BG zone would be permitted on the property.
And again, I'm not suggesting we should let the Water Supply Board govern what we do as a town. I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm just curious if it has an impact on the decision or recommendation from the Plan Commission. Jeff, did you get this?
That's Jeff with the weigh-in on it.
Yeah.
Yes, I received the letter, I have reviewed it, and my own personal opinion as Chair of the Plan Commission, I have no concerns with the proposed zone change to BG. I'll offer, if anybody, any other member of the Plan Commission has any concerns regarding that correspondence.
I didn't see anything, and there wasn't really many specifics in there.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they were asking for limitation. The reality is, the property next door is already BG, and this is just a natural progression of that zone. I have absolutely no concerns with the proposed zone change and stand by the Plan Commission's recommendation that will be set forth later.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions of Ashley?
I, I've got a question. Ashley, and I, maybe, maybe the applicant can answer this, but I'm just curious, is there, what was the rationale to retain a portion of the lot RR one-twenty?
So the, the applicant's original request was for the BL zone and for the purpose, as, as it was explained to the Plan Commission when we discussed it, was so that he could use the property not just for the business, but also to have, eventually to have a residence on it. And the BL district allows that, although I'll say it doesn't technically allow it once you get the liquor license, but that's a whole different issue. And so be, in the discussion with the Plan Commission, it was pointed out that the BG zone would be more appropriate because that would be consistent with what is in the area, and it would be more consistent with what is on the future land use map, which has that area directly adjacent, remaining as BG. And the applicant expressed concern that with the BG zone, it does not permit a residence on this, on the lot. And so after some discussion about that, it, we came to the conclusion that if he retained the residential zoning in the rear portion where he intended, intends to build the home at some point, and uses the front portion of the lot as he is now for the, for the business, that would actually accomplish allowing both of those uses on the property.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right. Let me, I'll open it up to the public. Public have any questions on this?
Richard Fenning and Ridge Road. I'm in favor of this change. We need tax revenue in this town. And if we don't start changing, we're going to be in a financial crisis. We, we want to bring in business? Well, let's start with the people who are here, and the businesses that are in town now that want to expand. Councilman McCormick, I'm shocked that you brought up the City of Providence Water Supply Board. Are you representing here tonight? Are you in a business relationship with them?
You know I was referencing a letter from them. I'm not going to discuss anything else regarding the Water Supply Board because I, I can't.
The question was, are you in a business relationship with them?
Richard.
Yes. Did they buy your development rights?
Richard.
We're not discussing that. I'll handle this.
Madam Chair, this may be a violation, an ethical violation.
See what you got to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I, I would hope that the council in the planning board approve this, because if we don't start bringing tax dollars into this town, we're going to be in severe trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard. Any other questions or comments? Okay, barring none. Chairman, do you have a motion from the planning board?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion from the Plan Commission to find that the proposed zone change is in conformance with this, I'm sorry, the future land use map of the, the amended future land use map of the situat comprehensive plan is in conformance with the comp plan. And additionally, that the zone map amendment in the, in the consistent with the applicable purposes of the situat zoning ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just apologize that a few other commitments, we weren't on top of this, and I will reserve the possibility of sending a letter to think about the future. I understand you're intending not to have it be a precedent, but I haven't talked to my board about it and I will be glad to do that. As you know, I wear two different hats for the town. One has Hope Village, Plan Commission, Planning Committee, and obviously we're discussing these sorts of things for the future as well. And our feeling down there is we're going to have to be open to some sorts of subdivisions if we're going to put the appropriate density in the right place. So obviously, this is important to the town in terms of being on the edge of forest as well as the town. So thank you. I will do that. And one last comment as a citizen. I love wine and I've been known to go a long distance to get the wine I want. So in the town, I'd love to, I'd love to have opportunity for wine. I like the old days when I was able to go a short distance to the market for wine and hey, even walk to the village market. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, you've heard what the Plan Commission did. Do I have a motion if you concur with what they voted on?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion on it? Or barring a special in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me against? Passes. Do I have a motion to oppose the public hearing?
No.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Passes. I don't know, adjournment? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes. Thank you.
We're good?
We don't ask to adjourn?
No. We, our Plan Commission, we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That wasn't bad, right?
Like, yeah.
Yeah, try it. It's almost forty.
Councilman McCormick.
Present.
Councilman Parmley.
Present.
Councilwoman Yor. Councilman Grandy. Council Vice President D'Agostino.
Present.
Councilman Muser.
Present.
And Council President Collins.
Proclamations, presentations, and acknowledgements for review discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. A. Recommendation from the police chief for the following candidate to be hired from the police officer's recruitment process. Lateral recruit candidate Amando Ucci Jr. for probationary police officer position. Terms and conditions of employment in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of Police Officers, IBPO Locals 502. Chief?
So, Amadeu Ucci comes through us from Warwick. He graduated Warwick Police Academy. Applied to Situate, went through the process of Situate. He is a Tollgate High School graduate, Wheaton College graduate, bachelor's degree, and played four years of baseball up at Wheaton. We're happy and excited to have him lateral over from Warwick. Amadeu, if you could come on up. His grandfather is going to be with him, pinned the badge on. I'm going to do it down here so he doesn't have to go up and down the stairs.
I, Amadeu Ucci Jr., do solemnly swear to uphold constitutions of the United States and the state of Rhode Island that I will faithfully execute my duties as a police officer, faithfully and partially enforcing the laws, ordinance, of the state of Rhode Island and the town of Situate, diligently guarding constitutional rights of all persons in accordance with rules and regulations of the Situate Police Department.
Mr. Council President, motion to approve the police chief's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made seconded.
Aye.
Motion made seconded. All favor?
Aye.
Any against? Also, just a note, there's no virtual participation on these public hearing items. Item A, consideration of proposed amendment to change the zoning classification on Lot 55, Sessos Platte 28. Located at 1160 Chopmest Hill Road, Michael Defazio, Defazio Farm and Vigilant, applicant, owner, from a split of RR 120 and RS 120 to a split of RR 120 and BG Business General with a smaller RR 120 zone than currently exists.
Michael Defazio, the zone change. Reason for the zone change is my client owns the farm that you alluded to. He is going to attempt to change the zone so that he will be in a position where he could apply for a liquor and events license. He's looking to enhance his business along with the town, bring more businesses to the town. His intention is to bring in some events to the farm. The winery that he has, bringing in events such as weddings and anniversaries and whatnot. Bringing people into the farm to enjoy the winery that he has there. And the first step to do that would be for him to have this zone change. He intends on keeping the area rural and he's changing, although he's changing it from the residential zone into the business zone to allow him to have the events that he's planning on having.
Okay. Any questions for the council, the attorney, or the applicant? Barring none, do we have any from the audience?
Richard Finnegan, Bridge Road. Again, we need to help businesses in town, bring in more revenue for this town, and I hope this council approves of this thing.
Thank you, Richard. Hey, barring no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? It's all set. B. Town council sitting is the beverage licensing board liquor license approvals.
We need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve what? No, we just approved it. Hey, didn't we just approve that?
Mr. Council President, I move approval of a public hearing matter A.
Second.
Hey, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? If passes. Item B. Town council sitting is beverage licensing board liquor license approvals, expiring 12/1/26, subject to receipt of all required paperwork, all state and local permits, compliance with all stipulations, rules, and regulations as previously required by the town council, and necessary approvals from all department heads on item 1 to item 12 is on the agenda. Any motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion on it? Any discussion from the public? Barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes. Item C. Town council sitting is the licensing board junk secondhand sales renewals, expiring December 31st, 2026, subject to receipt of all required paperwork, all state and local permits, in compliance with all stipulations, rules, and regulations as previously required by the town council. A. Halls Garage Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. We have any discussion on that? We have any discussion from the audience? Barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes. Item D. It's the first reading of the addition of Davis Road to the no-through trucking ordinance.
Move approval.
Motion's made seconded. Any discussion?
Actually, I just have a question. Does that include local trucks as far as for residents on that road? That's excluded from that, correct?
Always.
Okay. Thank you.
Any from the public? Hey, barring no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? It passes. Item six, public comment for items not on the agenda.
Evening. My name's John Augustine. I live in the district of the North Situate Fire Department. I submitted my application for the North Situate Fire Department as a junior member at the age of 15. It was a program where as a kid I could get involved with the fire department, go on emergency calls, begin to learn about the tools, equipment, and culture. As I got closer to the age of 18, I was busy with school and college. But while studying fire science at CCRI, I was accepted into the Providence Fire Academy. Following graduating the Fire Academy and becoming a Providence firefighter, I wanted to give back where it all started for me. After filling out another application for the fire department in North Situate, I was approached by the captain stating I wasn't special and that he didn't care if I was a professional firefighter. I'd have to complete six months of probation and only allowed to come off probation if I had completed all the tasks on the probationary firefighter checklist. A checklist has to dine for somebody with no experience in the fire service. This obviously didn't immediately pique my interest considering I just spent the past six months, close to 1,000 hours getting nationally certified to be a firefighter. Seeing the writing on the wall, I didn't pursue any further interest in being a member of the North Situate Fire Department. In the town of Situate, there's many paid firefighters who don't feel welcome to give back to their community due to the attitude and structuring of some of the command staff members. Today, I hold the rank of fire lieutenant and I'm a nationally certified instructor currently teaching at the Rhode Island Fire Academy. I listen to the town's radio frequently and I notice North Situate has a hard time getting apparatus to respond to calls through dispatch too. This causes the 911 dispatcher to send another firehouse, creating a delay in care and a threat to public safety. I'm requesting this town council, please investigate the department to see what can be done to improve the North Situate Fire Department.
Okay, thank you.
That's the first time I've heard that.
George Cosmo, Cecil Capmans Road. The last joint meeting of the plan commission and town council was on July 24th. The minutes of that meeting that are filed with the Secretary of State are materially incomplete. They state under item 3A for the minutes, consideration of proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan concerning lot 18 on tax assessor's plat 38 located five Ridgewood Drive. The existing zoning designation on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan is proposed to be changed from RR 120 to BG. Both the plan commission and town council must separately vote on this matter. That's all it says in the minutes. I watched the video. There were actions taken. There were votes taken that are required to be recorded by member under the Open Meetings Act. These minutes do not reflect that. Under a further item, the applicant for a zone change withdrew the application without prejudice. That needs to be recorded. It's not recorded. The minutes are materially incomplete. They were approved by the town council at their September 11th meeting, which makes this a knowing violation.
Okay, thank you, George.
George, thank you very much. I will review the tape, and if I made a mistake, it's my fault, not anybody else's. I'm sorry. I'm very, very sorry.
Richard Finnegan, Ridge Road. We just had a resident come up here and approached the council about an issue with our fire departments. Will the council be putting that matter on a future agenda?
I'll look into it.
Well, I would hope you would put it on a future agenda because this is a public safety. This concerns all of us. Our insurance rates in this town are very high. And there's ways that our fire departments can get those insurance rates down. I haven't seen any movement in that area. So I'd hope you put it on the agenda so we could really find out what is going on here. It's not a club. This is for public safety. If they want a club, join a club. Don't join the fire department. And you're a member here on the fire department, and I'm not downing our fire departments at all. But what I'm saying is if we have professional firefighters who want to be firefighters in this town, why are we preventing them from helping fellow citizens? It doesn't make any sense. So if somebody has, if somebody from the fire department wants to answer that, I welcome it. I would like to know, why are we preventing professionals from joining a volunteer fire department? Thank you.
Point's well taken, Richard. Did anybody else have anything for public comment?
President, I have something for public comment if I can do that from up here. The Situate Girl Scouts, this past Saturday, they were at the town hall planting tulips. I drove by. There were about 15 of them with two Girl Scout leaders. I don't know if any of those parents are in the audience, but sincere thank you, gratitude for that public service of planting those tulips. It was a really nice thing to see. And also, on December 2nd, the Christmas Pops concert that is hosted by General Centracchio this year. And every year, it's dedicated to first responders. And if you notice the billboards this year, the posters they have, it says first responders and volunteers. And what they mean by volunteers is all the people we have in this town who volunteer their time on boards and commissions, the land trust, conservation commission, the sustainability committee, the Situate Preservation Society. All of these groups, they volunteer their time, they put in countless hours, and it's to thank them also. There's just limited space in the brochures to do that. I asked the general to include them and he was gracious enough to do that. Thank you.
Peter. Yes?
Steve Corrins, Old Plainfield Pike. I would just like to personally publicly thank two people in the town. One, Peggy Long. The pushing through the upgrades and renovations to the town hall was, I think, materially on her shoulders. From my view, it's been a great job. It shows very well for the town. And then I've seen Kirk Loizell is going to be retiring, I think in a month or so. Again, I've seen nothing but great work out of Kirk and the things that he's done. And so again, as a citizen in the town, I'd like to thank both of them and hopefully town council recognizes them both.
Thank you. Okay, barring no other, we'll move on to item seven, the consent items. Could I have a motion?
Prove.
Discussion on it?
Mr. President, I'd just like to echo the gentleman's comments with regards to Kirk and his... his, uh, impending resignation effective, uh, early January. Uh, as many of you probably know, uh, Kirk's been with the town for a number of years. He, he's really done an excellent job as DPW Director, getting a lot of projects, uh, done throughout the town. And, um, he will be sorely missed. I, uh, would love to, uh, add, uh, that I don't support that aspect of the consent agenda, but I, I think he's earned his retirement and, and I just wanna, um, I think I echo the, the council, uh, and, and many of the, uh, uh, citizens of the town when we say thank you Kirk for your, uh, service.
I'd like to add to that also, as part of the Town Hall renovations, there were shrubs and greenery planted, uh, along the front of the building. And there's a beautiful, very expensive pine tree at the corner that Kirk paid for out of his pocket because of his dedication to this town and to say thank you again, a, a great public servant.
Thank you. Okay, motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? It passes. Item eight, appointments reviewed, discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. Uh, item A, Conservation Commission application received from Mike, uh, Deena Thomas, Donald, uh, McRobbin, Conservation, recommended appointments. Is one is Dean, uh, Tempest Thomas for a three-year term ending November 30th, 2028? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Uh, move approval.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Borrowing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Passes. Item two is Donald McRobbin to finish the remainder of a three-year term ending November 30th, 2026.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? Passes. Item B, Land Trust applications received from Jen Miller, Michael Carpenter, Deena Thomas, the Land Trust recommends appointment is Michael Carpenter to finish the remainder of a five-year term ending November 20th, 2026.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? It passes. Item nine, resolutions, review, discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. Item A, resolution to support the Land Trust application for the Riley Lane Connector, including a stairway from the end of Riley Lane to the Land Trust property, clearing and marking a trail from Riley Lane to the Doctor's Lane parking lot, installing a bench and signage at an estimated cost of $60,000, including an in-kind match of $15,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion on it? Borrowing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? It passes. Item B, resolution in support of an application to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management of an outdoor recreation grant to repair and resurface the four tennis courts at Brick End Field.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? It passes.
Mr. President, it's been brought to my attention that, um, as part of the scoring system with these two, uh, applications, if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to kind of prioritize them. Is that so? Is your understanding?
Yes.
So that being the case, we've been waiting for years for these tennis courts to be done. Um, and as much as I'm a supporter of the, the Land Trust and Conservation Commission, um, I do think that, um, the tennis courts should take a precedence. So I'd make a motion that for, that we prioritize, uh, that, uh, the tennis courts over the, uh, the Land Trust opportunity and, and hope that both get through clearly.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, do you want to have a discussion on it? The audience? Borrowing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? It passes. Item C, resolution regarding revision of the school capital budget for purposes of funding from the $3,500,000 of school bonds.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion on it, the council?
Yeah, I, um, I attended that meeting and, um, the new building, uh, person there has identified quite a lot of issues in regards to, uh, uh, structural items. And, um, I think they're gonna revamp what the priority list is to directly health and safety related items. And, um, I'm definitely in support of, you know, fixing roofs before we, you know, paint hallways to look nice. So as these priorities come forward, um, I'm gonna try to be more involved in those meetings to enlighten the council more on, on what our needs are. Thanks.
All right, the only thing about that is it has to go through, uh, the bond attorney, Dave Ferrara.
Yep.
Because this is the council's responsibility for this bond.
Yeah, I mean, all of these items are included on their request through RIDE. So now it's a matter of just prioritizing what they think the needs are. And I, I think if, you know, I obviously think roofs before prettying things up is, is important, but...
No, but what I'm talking about is if they want to change it like this.
Within, yeah, all the items within the bond, yeah, yeah, it's all, it does all go through the council. But I mean, um, the reprioritization is what I'm saying I support.
Okay. Any other discussion on it?
Mr. President, as you can see, our, our schools are falling apart. And I, I just want to bring to the council's attention that I think it was the opera money, like $3 million? Thinking back, does the council think that they maybe should have put more money into the town buildings instead of giving it away to organizations? Because now, now we're moving money around because we have major structural problems. So I was just wondering, does, does the council think that we made a mistake?
Well, the roof down at, uh, I, I asked about the roof down in, um, Hope School that they're doing. They had prioritized that to do that a couple of years. But then recently with the, one of the major rainstorms they had and like that, they found out they had more structural damage than they really thought they had. That's why this come about like that. So based on that and everything like that, no, I don't think the council made a mistake.
But we, we don't have a contingency fund for, for these.
Well, we have a capital plan and now they're reorganizing it.
I, I couldn't hear you because of the speaker.
I said, we have a five-year capital plan, money's been put into it. And now the priorities are changing. It's in a fluid motion, Richard. You know, we support the, the capital project.
Well, I was just saying, I mean, I, I, I think that there's, there's a fund of money there that we could have put into our town buildings. And i- if we use it for town buildings, then we wouldn't have to go to the taxpayer to get that money. That, that money was federal money, you know, of course taxpayers, that's where it comes from.
Well, the council did put over a million dollars in the Town Hall.
Yeah, and I do appreciate that, absolutely do appreciate that. And I think that the people who work at Town Hall appreciates that. But, you know, I, I understand that, you know, I, the school buildings are the town's responsibility. And I think i- if we get any more grants, I, I would hope the town really looks towards fixing town properties before we give it out to organizations. Thank you.
Richard, I'll just say too that I, that my recollection is that 160,000 did go to Hope School for their, oh God, I, I recall it was suppression system.
Yes.
And then about another three quarters of a million dollars went to the roads, which arguably is a big asset in the town.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any against? It's all set.
Can I just add one thing?
Yep.
Town Hall renovations are amazing. And I just, before people start to leave even more than they already have, I want to invite you all on December 1st, from 10 to 12 Town Hall, we are having an open house graciously donated by patrons. No tax money is being expended. And we're gonna have coffee and, and I'd really love to showcase what an amazing job every department did. DPW did so much of the extra work that we didn't have the money for. So I, I really would love people to come. I had Jackie Moorhead from the Observer at my office yesterday to do an interview because the Observer wanted like hundreds of dollars for an ad. But this will be a free ad. So, but it is so nice that people come in and they feel so much more comfortable. There's no more walking up and downstairs. And, um, so I greatly, greatly appreciate the council that chose to use that money to redo Town Hall. So, thank you.
Peggy, I just want to add on top of that, that, you know, we talked about Kirk earlier in the, in the crew at DPW. We could never have done what we did up at Town Hall without their work. They stretched that dollar substantially. Uh, if we had to contract all of that out, we could not have done what we did.
Ever have gotten done if we had to contract it all out. Those guys worked tirelessly, painting and woodworking and cleaning. Um, I, I can't thank them all enough.
Okay, thank you, Peg. Item 10, Town Business, review, discussion and/or potential action and/or vote. Item A, request from Luke and Antonetta Capasso, 855 Tonk Hill Road to waive the credit requirements, Community Septic Loan Program for a new septic loan in the amount of $21,700 at 1% for a term of 10 years. The applicant does not meet the debt-to-income ratio requirement under the Community Septic Loan Program Guidelines. Council's wish?
Um, I saw this and in the past, I've not been an advocate of, um, programs that don't meet the guidelines. However, um, I looked up the Zillow value of this property. It's a, right now it's approximately $350,000. There's a $137,000 mortgage on the property, so there's significant, um, equity. I spoke with council, um, and we would be in the second position behind the mortgage. So, um, we appear to be in good shape from a financial standpoint regarding, because of the value of this property and the equity that's in it. That would be one of the saving graces as opposed to some of the other, um, proposals that have come before the co- the council in the past that didn't have this type of, um, financial strength behind it.
Got a motion?
Got a motion?
Yeah.
Comment?
Oh, okay.
I make a motion to approve to get to a more discussion.
I'll second it for, uh, discussion purposes.
Motion been made in seconded, discussion on it?
Wyatt, if I could, is, can you, is there any way that they, we could get pushed out of a second position on this property? Because that's the basis upon which I was, I would support this is the loan to value being considerably low.
Uh, the quick answer would be, uh, no, uh, given Mr. Grundy's comments, that we haven't done any independent due diligence on the property. Uh, I know in the application, they, they said, uh, it was one mortgage. So if, if that is accurate, which presumably it is because it's on the application, uh, we would be in second position. Um, if they went to refinance the property, they would either have to pay, um, pay off prior mortgages or get us to what's called subordination to get another lender ahead of us. And we would know about that and that would have to come to the council for a vote. The, um, only other thing that this applies to any mortgages is there are, um, entities such as the state that have a, we could have a superior lien for taxes or something.
Right.
So, okay, the quick answer is, is generally, generally no.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, obviously the, um, they, they, these people appear based upon, like I said, what, uh, Zillow estimates their property to be and what we call, you call comps in the real estate business comparables. Um, there appears to be significant equity in this property. These folks, if turned down, could apply for, I assume, uh, human, uh, home equity loan. Uh, but obviously the interest rate wouldn't be as, um, competitive as 1%.
Yeah, how strict are the rules for this program to be met?
I'm sorry, Pete, say that again?
How strict are the rules? It says that, that the applicant does not meet the debt-to-income ratio requirement under the Community Septic Loan Program Guidelines.
That's correct.
How strict are those?
Uh, they're, they're actually, um, I mean, I only say this from past experience on votes like these. Um, there is, um, debt-to-equity ratio, there is, there, um, the value of the property, the amount of mortgage against the property. Um, they're very stringent and if you don't meet them, you don't qualify. In some previous ones that they, the folks have been basically what we call under, o- o- upside down, is that they, nothing was going in their favor. Um, all the numbers were against them significantly and we refused to, um, back the loan. Um, in this particular case, they don't meet the, the debt-to-income ratio. Um, but the only, and you know, you said, the only caveat I'm saying here is, is that it appears to, it appears to have a significant equity value in the property that, um, we're not necessarily in a, a bad position. We're not in the perfect position because a perfect position would not be in front of us because they would have hit all the, the, uh, benchmarks within the program.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any discussion for the public? Borrowing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody against? Passes, Peg. Item C, request from EMA Director Robinson for approval?
Skip B.
Oh, I missed B, sorry. B, request from the Situate? Request from the Situate 250th Committee for funding in the amount of $10,000 to finance events, including but not limited to highlighting Situate's contribution to the Revolutionary War.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made in second, we have a discussion on that?
My only question is where does it come from?
Yeah, I echoed Tim's question.
I talked to Ted and Ted said that we have to find the money in the budget. You talked to him about it.
Well, I, I gotta, I gotta say, being a member of the Budget Committee and it having been, I'm, I'm going for, for, uh, therapy for PTSD after, um, after this year's budget meetings. Um, I'd like to know where the $10,000 is.
So here's, um, this is seed money. We need seed money and we are, um, we're hopefully going to have items that we're going to sell, which are signs, lawn signs that everybody can purchase and have on their, their lawns. You know, some other memorabilia, you know? And so hopefully that will replenish that money and then maybe get some type of, uh, you know, um, donations from local businesses and whatnot to sponsor different, different events. Um, but again, we, we need seed money to get that going. And we're hoping to have that in an account where we can hopefully replenish that and anything that we don't use would go back to the town, for sure. But, um, but we need seed money to get that off the ground. And that's what really this is.
Council President, may I say something? May I say something?
Yeah.
Also, um, like one of the, one of the expenses was we wanted to put up new signs coming into Situate. The signs that we have are wonderful, but they're old and they're falling down. And I just saw Foster's signs, that they're just put up and they're beautiful. So we had figured that into the budget and Bill Mindy had worked tirelessly to get a very good price. But now we realize maybe we can, uh, tap into the signage committee app- But now we realize maybe we can tap into the signage committee app for money. That is not, that's not being used because the sign committee didn't spend as much and if we don't spend it on signs, it's going back to the government. So, I mean, we're, we're just, we are asking to have a cushion. Most of the programs, I mean, Steve has been amazing with figuring out programs that are not really going to cost too much, but we have to have something in our pocket to be able to do it. We're doing at least one event a month. One event a month at the Preservation Society, at the Congregational Church, Town Hall, Senior Center. I mean, it's, this, this is our country's 250th. It's not like we just want to celebrate a birthday.
So, and there's, there's a lot of grants too, Peg, right?
Yes, and we're putting in for those too, but they want to make sure that the community is behind you. They're not going to give money to an organization. I believe we might get $1,000 from the state.
Well, it's, I think it's a thousand to $10,000 for one of them, but then there's a lot of others.
There's a lot of others and.
Listen, I, I, listen, I'm in total favor of this. I'm in total favor of this. I'm just trying to be fiscally responsible, find out where we get it from. How about approving this tonight, but then requesting that the Town Treasurer come back to us next month with a specific reallocation or something like that? Is that a possible, possibility? Said, so the Town Treasurer can come back to us and tell us where he's going to find the $10,000?
Yes.
That's all.
I, I would amend my motion to include that requirement.
I'll second that amendment.
I, I have something else to say based, based upon what was, a comment that was made. The signage entering Situate are two white signs with blue lettering. They were an Eagle project done by Calvin Johnson and.
Sharon Johnson is involved in this whole project too?
I'm probably sure she is, but I'm, I'm sure, and I'm, know Sharon has been after Calvin year, every year to make sure that those signs are kept up. So I don't know that they're falling down or that they're shabby. Quite frankly, I noticed them every time I enter and exit town because it is an Eagle project and I haven't seen them be in disrepair. So I'm not exactly sure what's being seen by other people, but I don't see those signs in disrepair.
May I say something? It's not that they're in disrepair, they're just getting older. And we wanted a sign, welcome to Situate with like hooks underneath and excuse me, when it's the 250th, we can put, you know, the 250th, when it's our, you know, our festival, when it's our, it'll be what, 400? Oh God, I don't even know, but when.
It's our 300, yes.
300. We can put Situate's 300 anniversary.
Which is actually what, six years after the 250, I believe, right?
Yes.
We are 300, so we want to change those signs and actually reflect that on those signs coming in and out of town. And we've had lots of discussion with Sharon and Sharon's had lots of discussion with her, her son about it. And they're, they're really in conjunction with this whole.
Well, the, the signs were designed by Calvin to reflect the age and antiquity of Situate. And they're supported by two poles. They don't hang in the air without support, so we could attach all those things to the poles. I'm not going to say anything else because this is not what we're discussing, just that I hate to see something taken down that's still functional.
Not necessarily have to be taken down. Another one can be added close by.
Any other discussion? Richard?
Richard Finning and Rich Roder. It's very pleasing to see Councilman Grandy, Councilman Cormick asking where the funds are coming from. We, we went through budget hearings and it was, it was a difficult budget hearing. And one of the biggest things that I got out of that budget hearing is when we transfer money, we need to do it publicly and transparently. We need to inform the residents where the money's coming from. So I, I would agree with that motion to come back, have the treasurer come in and tell us where this money's coming from. I know, I, I believe we did take out 200,000. I don't know if any of that money's been spent, but I, nobody has ever come to the council and said a dime of that money has been spent. So I, I like the treasurer to be here, as so I see members of the council would. And to inform us what, what's going on with the taxpayers' money. Cause the town's money is the taxpayers' money. I think we should know where our money's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. No other discussion?
From 27 Thomas Angel Way. I should know the answer to this question, but I don't. How many residents are there in this town?
10,400.
So 10,000 residents. We're talking a dollar apiece? Is that what we're talking about here? A dollar apiece for 10,000 residents? Maybe it's on your open house, Peg. You could just put a bowl out there.
Oh, I'm going to.
Tell people that you're charging them. Just ask them if they can donate a dollar apiece. There's so much money that goes on around. You got a committee that's willing to do the 250th and think about it. And I think there, I have a committee with your blessing. I think, I don't know, I'm not on the committee, but I guess they're acting with your blessing. Let a committee do their work. I honestly don't think when you start planning how to, how to do something, you need some money. Sorry to say it, but you need some money. And $10,000, considering all the other money that gets spent, doesn't seem like a whole lot of money for me. But if you want a dollar apiece, just put a notice out on your constant contact and I'll bet you'll get a dollar apiece from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. And this request did not come from me. It came from Reggie and the, and the commission. We all agreed on it. And we have a very vibrant commission and they are working tireless, tirelessly to put these programs. It must be.
Open house.
Open house tonight. But they, they're working. It's, it's not like we're going to be going out to eat with it or anything like that. And I also, I need to speak to the town solicitor because we did discuss this at our last meeting. We meet once a month. And to see if I could send out or if the commission could send out committee, a flyer asking for donations. But we need to make sure that that's legal for us to do that. Cause we are not a 501(c)(3), but we're also, we are a committee of the council. And so that, we are not 501(c)(3), but we're not for profit. We're not nonprofit. We're not for profit as a town. So, I mean, it's, can I just ask a question then? We just approved two grants. Where was that money coming from? Nobody asked that.
The grants.
The matching grants. Did, do those committees have that money?
That comes in an in-kind contributions, Peg. That's, that's what they're often met. And no one's, no one's questioning the, the $10,000. It's just, it's just, it's prudent to, you know, as you make these things and you make a hard decision, you're going to spend it in the next 12 months as opposed to a grant opportunity. Where's the money come from? That's all, that's all we're asking.
Well, so there are a lot of grant opportunities as well, so we're hoping to get those. I mean, again, this is just seed money. We're not, we don't, we don't have it designated where we're going to spend it. We want to replenish that fund. We want to sell signs. We want to sell different, you know, we want to, we want to replenish this money, but we want to have nice 250 flags flying through the, you know, the town of Situate, Clayville and Hope, you know, mocking the 250 anniversary. You know, we, we want to, we've had a lot of, we have, how many Revolutionary War veterans do we have from this town? I have one ancestor and so we want to do this upright.
Mr. President, I'd like to call a question on the issue.
Okay, the question's been called. Put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? It's all set. Item C, Request from EMA Director Robinson for approval to purchase fire hoses for all fire departments using funds from the Fire Department Capital, Amount not to exceed $55,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on that? Bottom of the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? It passes. Item 11. Possible motion motions to convene into closed session, closed or executive session. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? I'm going to close session. Item 12, Motion to Close Executive Session. Minutes, announcement of votes, Executive Session Event A. Discussion End or Potential Action? Announced.
So that means, guys, bye-bye.
Have a good night.
Have a great night.
Motion to close the executive session, motion to seal the executive session minutes, announcement of the votes. The vote, there was one vote, it was to keep Mike DiOrio as a contractor at twenty hours, maximum of twenty hours a week at sixty five dollars an hour. And it was unanimous. So can I have a motion on that?
So moved. Second.
Motion made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Passes. Motion adjourned. Gary?
Motion adjourned. So moved.
Have a second?